Good morning and welcome to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners October 25th, 2016 Work Session. We're proud you're here. I take this time to recognize our elected officials. Is there an elected official in the office? Thank you all for being here. Mark, can you bring forth the sign and chief? Our invocation and pledge will be brought to us by Pastor Duane Eubin with Ridge Road Baptist Church. Would you stand with me if you're ready?
Let's pray first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, as we come to you today, dear God, we're reminded of your precious Scripture. For the Bible says that righteousness exalteth a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. Lord, I pray, dear God, that every decision that's made today, dear God, every discussion that's given, and Lord, I pray, dear God, that it'll be given with righteousness, Lord, not with our righteousness, but with yours. Lord, I pray, dear God, that you'd guide these men as they lead our county. Lord, I pray, dear God, that they would make righteous decisions on everything that they'd do and they'd seek your base. Lord, I pray for our upcoming elections, dear God, that you would have your hand on those elections, dear God, and righteousness would be exacted. Lord, I pray, dear God, that you'd help us always to remember those that serve our country so valantly and so bravely, dear God, our veterans, dear God, that have served in the past. Lord, I pray that we'll never forget their sacrifice and their service. Lord, I pray for our police officers, our law enforcement all over the land, our firefighters, those that protect us, dear God, so that we can have the freedom that we enjoy. Lord, I pray your blessings and your protections upon them. And, Lord, we sure do love you. We thank you for your mercy, your kindness. Thank you for making America a great country. And, Lord, I pray, dear God, that we'll always strive to do what's necessary, dear God, to keep our country free. While we love you and we praise you, in Jesus' name.
Amen. That's a beautiful prayer. The October 11th, 2016 Work Session minutes and the October 11th, 2016 Board Meeting Minutes are available for your review. If you would please, keep Sheila Holland and Wanda Ruff, two of our employees, in your prayers. They lost their dad last night, Mr. Reagan. And also, one of our city employees, Tanya Clark, just lost her dad, Mr. Floyd Rowminds. So if you would, keep both, those two families in your prayers. Today, when this meeting is over, and we'll look at the 11:00, 11:30 time mark, we will be dedicating the completion of the Bill Karoo Four-Lane Highway all the way around Hyrum. So it's finally complete. Scott had promised me that we would get this done in my term, and he did fulfill that promise. So thank you, Scott. And anything else you'd like to add to that? I know we're gonna have, just about everyone's ever worked on this project over about a 16 or 19 year history, so.
Absolutely. We just want to take a moment to recognize that everybody participating in the project can reflect on the history of what it took to get the project done. And I'd be glad if everybody, the public, is invited. We did have it on the website, so hopefully we'll have a few folks to turn out. Particularly the citizens that put up with all the detours and congestion during construction. We appreciate everybody's patience with that project. It couldn't happen a second too soon. They're gonna be ready.
And will you tell us where we're gonna try to meet and gather?
Certainly. If you go down to the hospital on, I would say, the Gatemaker right. It's a couple miles south at Pirate Prin. It's on the project, about in the middle of the project heading towards 92.
Perfect. So immediately following this meeting, and we'll have George Jones sing. Thank you all. Announcements, the Primal Pollen Business Expo, that's a family fun day with Business Expo on Saturday, November the 5th, from 10 till 2. Presented by the Artisan Built Communities. It's free admission, free activities, music raffles and giveaways. There's a Kids Zone, there's a Taste of Pollen, and many other vendors. This will be hosted by West Ridge Church. Information for this is on the back table if you care to attend. So it sounded like a fun day for our kids, and the first time, I think, that we've had an expo in about 10 or 12 years. So it should be a fun time. Also, we'll remind you that November 8th is Election Day, and we have had a super turnout so far with early voting. Most people tell me that the experience takes them about five minutes. We walked into the cafeteria, and there had been a line, but you move through that line in about five minutes. So so far, I think it's been a pretty great experience. So our November 8th meeting has been changed to Thursday, November the 10th, at the 10 o'clock timeframe and the 2 o'clock timeframe. So we will postpone that Election Day to Thursday. So if you would, while you're here, take that opportunity to go downstairs and note. Hopefully, we will have a super turnout. There's no invited guests. Bill awards discussed action to award the 2016 Flashing Yellow Arrow Traffic Signal Upgrades to the Low Bitter American Lighting Signalization Incorporated in the amount of $185,649.90. This is for left turn flashing arrow installations at nine various intersections in Paulding County. Tabitha, this is you, and George Jones.
I'm just gonna refer to a plate with all of this. I'm just gonna give it to George if that's okay.
If you're sure, George, sing, do whatever you need to do. Chairman, first, I'd like to say you have a great sense of humor. Unfortunately, I can't say that, but I'm teasing. I'd like to discuss the exciting topic of flashing yellow arrows at traffic signals.
Hello, George. Thank you, sir. Yes, they don't sound...
Okay. Well, now to the fun stuff. Basically, this project involves installing flashing yellow arrows at nine different county intersections, basically off system routes in Paulding. GDOT provided 70% of the funds originally for this, along with our striping project. They were looking at projects that were kind of easy wins where you would reduce the number of traffic crashes and the severity of traffic crashes. We identified intersections that had a two-year crash history of left turn crashes where we could install these flashing yellow arrows. Basically, the ACT HWA has found that flashing yellow arrows help reduce crashes by up to 35%, and also improves driver understanding and comprehension. In the District, District 6, GDOT District 6, five cities and four counties received funds. We were one of them. Paulding received the third highest amount of funds. After advertising the project, we had two bidders, and the low bidder was American Lighting and Signalization in the amount of $185,649.90. And we recommend awarding the bidder this company.
Any questions, George?
Thank you.
Thank you. Not only agenda, but Michael, if you could come up and talk to us about Trick or Treat Village. I felt we mentioned that earlier.
Absolutely. Year number 20 of the Halloween Trick or Treat Village. It's an event that is all about community. Started with county departments, it's not so much that anymore as it is community associations, businesses, civic groups, things like that, that come down there and help provide this event for anywhere from eight to 10,000 kids over a period of a couple of hours. So it is this coming Saturday at Earl Duffin Park in Paulding Meadows from 2:00 to 7:00. It will be crowded probably at any time that you come. So I wouldn't say get there early, stay late. So just come out and join us. It's a free event. I look forward to seeing you all there.
You can stick these guys in the back door though, can't you?
They look like they're in costume. Thank God for your support for that. It's a great event. It takes a lot of folks from everywhere, you know, to help us do it, so we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Reports from committees and departments. Lori Axelrod, I think you have a water system update, Lawrence. You need that music.
It went to sleep. I had to wake it back up again. We had two items that we wanted to bring before you today. About six weeks ago, we talked about the drought conditions in the region. And last week, I participated in a call with other water managers in the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District. And I wanted to bring this morning to your attention some of the information that we were shown last week. And why is this not showing?
It's gotten so much.
Oh, it's warming up too. Okay. There we go. We are now in Paulding County in extreme and exceptional drought. You will, we'll have some other slides that'll show you how that's changed over time. But as of last week, we have moved into this drought phase. Between September 6th, six weeks ago, and last week, the drought conditions have significantly worsened. I think that's, anyone that's looked in at their yards or at any of the landscaping around the community, we all intuitively know that. So the maps really just drive home what I think each of us knows in our experience in our lives. Looking back at where we were 10 years ago, going into the 2006, 2007 drought, our conditions are significantly worse than they were at the same point during that drought 10 years ago. The last three months, we've received only 25 to 75% of normal, not the normal precipitation for this period. Same thing over the last six months. When we look at the last 12 months, we were actually in the 75 to 100% rain. But that's because over six months ago, we start, we were having a lot of rain. It's really been in this last six months, this drought has come on very quickly. Our lawn and garden moisture index continues also to worsen. We are now down also in those extremely low levels. The thing that has also changed is the drought outlook for the next three months. We had been talking about this. There was a 50/50 chance of having a normal winter. And now we're looking at a three-month outlook through January where this drought, the drought is expected to persist. As you know, in September, the Georgia EPD did a drought response declaration for a Level 1 drought. We've been publicizing that, asking all of our customers to conserve, reminding people of the importance of conservation, and the current restrictions to not irrigate during the peak, that heat of the day, and limit their irrigation to 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. And I want to bring this up again, remind people, where really people aren't irrigating as much, but water systems are not seeing their demands going down. Speaking with Glenn Page about what they're producing at their treatment plants, they are seeing the peak demands continuing this month. Some of the highest, the highest demands that they've seen in the month of October. And so it is a situation that we are monitoring very closely, where we have had discussions about the existing water supplies around the region. Some of the reservoirs, some of the utility reservoirs are starting to show the impact, the effects of this dry weather and these peak demands. And so we, as part of the Water Planning District, are working together to try and make sure we get this message out to our customers and continue to track and escalate this if necessary. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention today so that we're prepared the next three months if we don't see any rain. And if demands don't go down, then we're probably going to see escalating response necessary to protect our water resources. We did, I think I alerted you each last week that we did assist our neighbors to the west. We have a connection, we actually have a connection to Polk County and supply some water to their eastern border. And they have an emergency interconnection on Vincent Mountain to down into Harrelson. So for about the last week and a half, we have been supplying water to Harrelson through that connection. There are, speaking with the Water Authority in last week, though, they expect, they believe they've got their beaver population under control now and restored some water down past their intake. And they are expecting that this week, that they will know, that at some point this week, they may either reduce or stop those purchases through Polk.
And you called Atlanta and you said okay to do that, correct?
We notified EPD. I actually called Glenn Page over at Coberry Etta first to alert him. And then we talked and said we also better notify EPD. I got a response back from EPD, how much they appreciated, whatever we could do to assist. The second item that I want to bring to you this morning in the way of an update is about our water master, water system master plan. And this is a project that's been underway and worked on for several years. It got slowed down a little bit as we were working on the reservoir, but we brought it to completion and wanted to bring that to you today. We've had the support of Nicole Wayne with Black and Beach, and she has been providing a lot of technical guidance. But a lot of credit of this goes to our engineering staff and to Corey Coates, our Engineering Division Manager. And I'm gonna let him talk a little bit about the model itself, and then I'll come back and talk about the recommendations.
Welcome, Corey.
Thank you. Good morning. So like Laurie said, I've worked on this project pretty heavily. I started with the county in March 2012 and started this project probably six months later. So I've been working on it for quite some time. Just to give a little bit of background of our system, we have approximately 1,000 miles of water main, seven storage tanks, seven booster pump stations, and that spans three predator zones. The model kind of dates back to the late 90s when the first model started being developed. Different consultants over the years have done different things with it. It wasn't until this current model that we really did a full system-wide model with every single pipe that we know of, and that was, that was put into the model. This most recent model was calibrated using hydro pressure recorders, flow monitors on the different master meters with our connections with Cobb and our SCADA system, which tracks pressures and flows hourly throughout the system at our pump stations. So basically, we took that data for a certain period and adjusted the model to match those filter results, so everything's all matched up. The most recent model was calibrated using a high demand month, which we picked out as July 2012. We had a day or, I guess, a month where we used around 12.25 million gallons a day. And then we also did a low period in March of 2013. We picked out, that was about a little over 9.5 million gallons a day. Since 2007, that's, we haven't really gotten much higher than that demand. It's just because of all the water conservation and the lack of building over the past years kind of have made us have a steady consumption right there. We also put in unaccounted pour water on a model based on previous audits that we've been doing for the past few years. This is kind of a snapshot of what the software looks like. I don't know if you can tell a whole lot. You can maybe see a bunch of colors in there, and that's basically showing our different size pipes in the system. So it's just like the real world. We set up the physical aspects, the pipes and pipe sizes and tanks, booster stations, put the elevations throughout the county, upload all that information in there. And then we set up the controls, just like, just like the real world, where certain elevation in a tank, if the water gets that low, it triggers a pump to kick on and start filling. It all works the same way in the model. Those benefits, it allows us to identify problem areas in regards to pressure and flow of water through the system. We've already been able to identify some of these areas and are working on projects to alleviate these problems. It also allows us to identify high demand areas, which drives planning upgrades in the system. So we took our billing system, we were able to get consumption data out of the billing system for each customer, and I call it, we geo-locate it. So a house on Ridge Road may have 2,000 gallons a month consumption. We can put that in that area. And somewhere up in Bentwater, somebody else uses a certain amount of water. We know kind of based on that what areas are high demand, and that drives, maybe if we need to upgrade a pipe, make it larger, some things like that. It also allows us to view potential system changes before we implement them. So we can go in, close a pipe, see how that's gonna affect things in that area. We can go in and make a pipe larger and see how that affects things. It's very dynamic in that regards. And this is kind of a sample of a graph that shows the Crassel Mountain tank, how the water level drops in there. So during the morning hours in the day, when heavy water usage is dragging that water level down, it gets to a certain point, and then our booster station kicks on and starts filling it again. And this just shows a comparison of how close the model results are to our actual SCADA results. And obviously, the biggest thing this has been used for is designing our reservoir program and future system improvements. We have this existing model set up for anything we want to do currently, but we also have some future models set up showing how the reservoir is gonna operate and any new booster station or large diameter mains that we need to feed the rest of the system. We've been able to use this model to have a base and add those extra aspects in to see how everything's going to work in the future. With that, I'll hand it back over to Laurie.
Thanks, Laurie.
Thank you.
So one of the things in looking toward the future were what kind of, what were our level ones of services, service that we were targeting? For water supply, of course, meeting, a hunt meeting or exceeding 100% of the maximum day demand. To be able to maintain a minimum of 50% of our average demands, day demand storage. For operations to have system pressures that exceed the minimums and have over 35 but under 150 PSI, and keeping velocities at under seven feet per second, and being able to handle that maximum hour flow. For fire protection, our goal was to provide a minimum of 750 gallons per minute flow for residents, particularly in neighborhoods, and for, and 1,000 jet gallons per minute for our customers, our commercial customers in commercial districts. The first thing we did was analyze that existing system to look at minimum pressures and looking at areas where, through that dynamic analysis, the periods, looking over time, and what we found was, as you would expect, on the inlet side, there are some pump stations, we have some low pressures, but also we have a concentrated area of low pressure in the Mount Tabor Road, Bobo Road area in Post 1. It was actually something that was brought to my attention when Commissioner Carmichael was in that city and that Mr. Davis and I have spoken with, spoken about in the, over the last month. On the maximum pressure sides, where we have pressures exceeding 150 with the rolling, the beautiful rolling hills of Paulding County create some challenges, and some of them have been addressed in the past through installing pressure regulating valves into some of our lower lying areas. We still struggle with high pressures through a number of areas of the county, and we'll continue to work on identifying and being able to reduce those pressures on our system. Those high pressures just lead to, I'll refer to it as wear and tear on the pipes. It's just hard on, hard on our distribution system as well as being difficult for then our, than our customers. I was talking with Ms. Skipper last week about, she lives in one of those, in one of those higher pressure areas, and was talking about having to make sure that that's controlled going into our pump. On fire flow results, these are, this is the existing system, under 500 gallons, under a 500 gallons per minute fire flow. And again, isolated high locations for the most part, where we have, where we, where we struggle a bit with issues. We are seeing some that we're working with, gonna be working with the fire department on in the, in the Union area, that are not what they experienced. And so we need to maybe go back and revisit some of that calibration in the Union area. And then in the, then running the commercial areas at 1,000, we also have, again, isolated High Point kind of areas where we're falling short of our goal. So one of our first priorities, as you saw the area on the map of the existing system, the Mount, that Mount Tabor area, one of the things that's been actually discussed and is in our files for the last four years was consideration of a Mount Pressure, Mount Tabor Pressure Zone. Corey mentioned that we have three pressure zones today. We have a main pressure zone that serves most of the county. We have a higher pressure zone in Union, and then we pump again to elevate in Yorkville. This Mount Tabor Pressure Zone would actually create... This Mount Tabor Pressure Zone would actually create, creates a Mount Tabor, creates a pressure zone within our main pressure zone to boost pressures within that Mount Tabor Bobo area. Involves valving off, some line improvements, as well as an elevated tank, replacing that, the tank that is not functioning on Mount Tabor today on that same property. The overall, our Phase One improvements to meet future demands of the system and deficiencies include the Mount Tabor Zone, the line, the transmission improvements for Richland Creek Reservoir coming down 61 and that booster pump station. We also have, have an issue with an elevated tank in the southern, southern part of the county that would be relocated. Looking forward, we looked at Phase Two, under 25 million gallons a day, about 2030, both with Cobb Marietta and before we come off of Cobb Marietta and after we come off of Cobb Marietta. This scenario is before coming off of Cobb Marietta, still supplementing our water supply with purchases. And that involves the, what we refer to as our East Loop. It's the loop that connects Highway 61 across to 92. And that's necessary then to turn off our northern interconnection with Cobb Marietta. We would continue to need to purchase water through our southern interconnect that we refer to as our Clayburn Interconnect to be able to maintain pressures in the south end. It was an interesting set of model runs about what we needed to do to turn off lines because we started running, we were looking at just the pipe network and everything looked good, but we don't maintain is, we don't maintain our storage. And that is an essential part of the, of the water system operation for fire protection and for meeting those peak hour demands. Overall, to take that same demand and to completely disconnect from Cobb Marietta, we will, we will need to extend water down Highway 61, or generally that corridor, down into the south end of Pauling County. The, so that's really, that transition is first, we need to make a, to make that loop on the, on the northern end, and then we need to make the, make that extension on the southern end. The timing of that may very well work out to be associated with a road improvement project. And so it's driven for us in the, in the prior to 2030, 30-32 timeframe, but may well happen earlier depending on what GDOT does with the, with Highway 61. Beyond that, we'll have additional strengthening of the distribution system to serve local demands and demand growth in the system. You see some extensions and some things that we'll be accomplishing with the roadwork on 92, and we'll be able to get those lines, those lines in with the road improvements, but also some other strengthening of the distribution system along 278 and other major railways through the county. Again, that's beyond the 2030 timeframe, not written in stone to be revisited every, every five years or so. One of the most important things to remember about a plan like this is it's a living document. The assumptions, Cory mentioned the assumptions that are made and are underlying this on the pipe network, the physical side, but there's another side of this, and that's where this growth occurs. So we have worked with community development to forecast where that, where those additional demands are going to be in our system. And then over the, over the course of time, we'll geolocate new customers, we'll kind of start building that, building that demand scenario again, rerunning them all, refining those improvements before each project is undertaken. Do you have any questions?
Three companies.
Sorry, we don't get to, we, the closest thing to trick or treat village we have is our customer service staff is all dressed up for Spirit Week this weekend.
Scott, she's starting to make you look real good.
You don't have questions.
No, thanks for your work. I know your Water Store Board had a long meeting last Wednesday.
Yes.
Three hours or so. I appreciate that work and I appreciate your work on what you're doing.
Thank you, Laurie.
Very much, thank you.
Public participation on agenda items, no one signed up to speak. Consent agenda, we have 12 consent agenda items. Appoint Kathy Stoller to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Task Force, that's Wall Drive, Fort Georgia, for the term ending 12/31/19. Kathy Fushan, she is the brains of our DOT. Thank you, Kathy. Number two, reappoint Donette Lee, Pauling County Library Board Trustees, with the term ending 12/31/19. Number three, approve the 2017 Pauling County Board of Commission River needs and you. Number four, Animal Patrol Hearing Board, reappoint with the term ending 12/31/17. Lynn Jackson, Chairman's appointee. Jessica Gullett, Post One. Jenny Dickerson, Post Two. Todd Gooseby, Post Three. And Wendell Hall, Post Four. Cemetery Preservation Commission, reappoint with the term ending 12/31/17. Hugh Walters, Chairman, Post One is vacant. J.B. Denton, Post Two. Kathy Bookout, Post Three. And Van Westbro, Post Four. Board of Health, reappoint for a six-year term ending 12/31/2022. Paula Benjean is a commission appointment. Planning and zoning commission, reappoint with the term ending 12/31/17. Harold Stokes, Chairman's appointee. Chris Wheeler, Post One. Alan Hornbeck, Post Two. Post Three is vacant. Jody Palmer, Post Four. James Kelly is the Mayor of Dallas appointment, and Joan Battle is the mayor of Perrins appointment. Water and Sewer Advisory Board is reappointed with the term ending 12/31/17. Bobby Maddis, David Barnett, and Morgan Raystraw, Chairman's appointee. Jeremiah Fields, Post One. Michael Creighton, Post Two. Jim Smith, Post Three. And Wayne Kirby, Post Four. Number nine, authorize the Chairman to acquit claim Track One, 0.251 acres, and Track Two, 0.231 acres of unneeded right-of-way of Parkway, no longer in use for public due realignment of Clayburn Parkway for the East Iron Parkway project. This is off of Milton Root Parkway. Scott Green first brought this to us, and we have met several times on this. Number 10, redefine, approve the easement agreements for parcels 43, 45, 46, 47, 48, and 19 of raw water pipeline for Richland Creek Reservoir. I'm going to call on Ms. Skipper for a quick second to take note of herity. She has been able to get this down to one easement?
One family easement.
This is not an easy task because we're talking about buying these easements in Barco County, and we do have condemnation when you're building a reservoir, you're putting in a pipeline, the chairman of that area agrees to allow you to do that. We haven't had to do that, which is amazing. And thank you for your work on this, it's been outstanding, and we, we've been working with some very, very powerful families in Barco County, and I don't know how you quite got this done, I want to know how you got it. But anything you want to say on this?
No, but I appreciate Laurie's help with it. Of course, we need tax for checks.
She's got to have some money.
I appreciate all your work, all y'all's work on it, because all the commissioners' goal and everybody that's been involved in it was to do what we need to do that way instead of the other way. That was our goal, and so thank you for your work, everybody.
This has been where the corporation goes back to Clarence Brown and then Chairman Steve Taylor. Now, what Commissioner Brown says, go across country, because he's not going to answer the phone. Wherever driveway we go over and mess up somebody's mailbox, and so he said, go across country and it'll save him about a thousand calls. So we did what they asked, and this is a great job. Number 11, adopt closed application to public hearing dates and times for the planning commission and zoning board of appeals, the stream buffer development waiver review committee, and the development waiver review for 2017 year calendar, and as that will be put on here. And number 12, amend the planning commission 2016 public hearing dates by adding a special call meeting for November 29, 2016 date. Would you like to read any of these?
I have a question about number 12 there, and what's the purpose for the special call meeting?
We had an item that was scheduled to go on today's planning commission meeting, and there was an advertising error and due to that, planning commission does not have meetings in November and December, and we felt that waiting until January was a little too long.
What is the, the post?
It's in Post Four.
Okay. I'll be at ACCG event, that'll be, so that's, I was making sure it wasn't Post One.
The planning commission will meet on the 29th, and it will be forwarded to your December board of commissioners.
Right, so you should have been at that planning meeting.
We're not going to call a special meeting for y'all, we're just going to hold the planning commission that day, public hearings, and then we'll, y'all will be on your December and the last meeting of the year for you.
That'll be good, thank you. That's the item that was marked off for today.
It is, and it appears that we might have two items on there from today, as far as I'm aware, it's going to be more than one.
Chairman, just asking, would you want to move any of these? I thought we would like to have just a quick discussion on it, it doesn't have to be resolved now, but maybe we could have a couple people look at it today. It's not a big deal, not end of the world, but I've noticed the last three or four years, our September meeting has fallen on the fall break for the school calendar. And at first, I thought, well, we skipped it on this one, but as I was looking at it again last night, we did, and we hit it again. And I know that the school calendar has kind of affected a lot of our vacations for kids, for people that have kids in school, simply because, one, the kids are out of school and somebody's got to take care of them. Anyhow, I know it affects a lot of our employees, and I've kind of noticed that, and then I kind of hear about, hey, I'm going out of town in the morning on Wednesday after y'all's meeting on Tuesday night. So I would like to see if we could rearrange that September meeting. Also talked to Chairman-elect Carmichael about it several months back, and he said that, he said that was good with him, he agreed, and I said, well, I'll remember to bring it up, but here we are, and I kind of forgot last week. So I'm remembering today, and so I don't know if we can, you know, my suggestion is we could move it back to the week before on Thursday, or if we need to change both of them, and I know it affects the, it could affect if we wanted to, the planning and zoning meeting that day, if we wanted to do that, or if y'all want to leave it. I'd like to change that planning and zoning meeting to whatever we change this date to. I just think if we can get it out of that week, it would be a blessing to our employees, which just helps us out.
Do you want us to change the meeting or do you want to tag it? Well, it looks like, so I'm looking at a calendar, the meeting would be September 26th, because the 10 o'clock work session, 7 o'clock meeting, and then we are two P and the planning commission. We could, in theory, move all of them, so if we have an advertising, planning and zoning get to the Thursday before is the 21st. And that would be up to y'all, if you want to do that.
How do we go about it, do we make a change?
If y'all want to do that, we can change that calendar, and that will be on this evening. If you don't want to leave it.
Wait about doing this, and double check with the script board, or you know we're good with this?
Their calendars are out for the year coming up and for the next year.
So it's happening this last week?
It's out.
Do we need also look at the spring break?
They're all covered. I looked at spring, and I looked at, I looked at winter and February, everything else is covered, but we seem to hit this one every single year. And I know it just affects some of our employees and all of us in this.
So you're giving that to us in form of a motion?
Well, I would, I'm discussing it to change the date, I would like to see what y'all.
You want to change the date, but not this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to change it, I just want to make sure everybody's good with changing it. If we go with the 21st, then that makes us have a meeting on the 12th and then the following week on the 21st, but we seem to have needed them, so I'm okay with that. I just want to do what y'all would like to do, I just want to get it out of that week.
But I've got to see where I've got plans.
Okay.
No, it's funny.
What is pleasure, the moment? You okay? I'll be with it.
Right, have a minute this evening, and then it'll open up in the planning commission calendar as well.
That'll be right. Thank you.
If they'll be changing this evening, see how we're changing it.
Thank you.
There's no old business under new business, discuss action about resolutions, 15 actions, 45 resolution adopted in Pauling County Water System Plan. Laurie, you have this on there, and it's pretty much what you have discussed.
It is, it's making an official adoption of the plan between then and.
Any questions? Number two, discuss action to approve the First Amendment to a lease agreement with Verizon Wireless, you have that on the agenda also?
Verizon, Verizon Wireless has a cell tower located on our property on Macklin Road, where our Macklin tank is and our maintenance facility. That has been in place since 1989, and our current lease runs through 2019. We have been approached by the agent for Verizon Wireless to do an amendment and an extension of that lease agreement, and they have, we have negotiated the following amendment terms. They would pay a one-time $10,000 payment upfront on signing of this lease amendment. There would be five additional five-year renewal terms added to the agreement, extending the, essentially extending the lease possibly through the year 2044. The rent would be increased from its current $242 a month to $1,000 a month. We would tie to annual rent increases in the amount of 3%, and we would have revenue sharing, 15% on any new subleases, license, or co-location agreements on that tower. We have taken this to the Water and Sewer Advisory Board, and actually, I appreciate that, we really appreciate their input on this because they were the ones that brought up the revenue sharing, and we went back to Verizon's agent and had that into the agreement.
Any questions, Laurie? Number three, discuss action, authorize the Chairman to enter to a contract with Kimberly Warren in the amount of $191,000, $195.69 for the engineering design services for the Ridge Road at Boffton Road and Cocklin Road, construction improvement project. George is just, you seen it again, this is in Post Three and four.
It never gets old, Chairman. Thanks, I'd like to discuss the recommendation to award design contract Kimberly Warren for design services for around about at the intersection of Ridge Road, Hornstone Road, and Boffton Road. This is in Post Two. This is in post two and three. I would have liked to found one in all four posts, but unfortunately it recrossed. Currently, the intersection operates as a four. As anyone who knows has driven through an all-ways stop intersection, operation works pretty decent when there are low volumes, they're great volumes, but as soon as the traffic volumes go up, you have really long delays, long odorous frustration. At this location, a study was done and it was determined that a roundabout would offer superior performance in terms of vehicle delays and costs less money in fact fewer property owners than a traffic signal. From Federal Highway Administration studies, roundabouts have shown to reduce severe injury crashes by 75%. That's due to the vehicles going into the intersection slower and they also have to yield going in. So it just operates better than a traffic signal where as you know, in a signal, some people speed up once they see the yellow light coming on and they crash. This particular project, we have an anticipated eight to nine months engineering design time once we get started on it. So that would probably end up sometime in July of next year if we start to be able to do this project. Currently, delays at this intersection, we have 11,000 vehicles on Ridge Road and over 5,000 on the Hornstone Road. In the AM peak hour, each vehicle going through that intersection has been modeled to have 56 seconds of delay per vehicle. With this project, we reduce the delay to 10 seconds per vehicle, which is an extremely significant number. This is a good project, it's exciting, this will be our first internal quality county roundabout and I'm all for it.
And you're dreaming at it, roundabout?
Any discussion for you guys that's in your folks? It's about time, we need more and more.
Scott, who's going to get credit for this?
Yeah.
Scott knows what I'm talking about.
It's all George.
That's not what I'm talking about, Scott. Vernon knows what I'm talking about.
Now, it's definitely a team effort. We all looked at this from the pre-construction, traffic operations side, so this is like, this is a full team effort.
There's some other locations too, okay?
We've got some more locations for you, George and Scott. I think Vernon and I both are supportive of the run for roundabouts and excited about that, so looking forward to that. I think I get three quarters credit on this one, so Scott said.
Okay, you have it.
Okay.
I hope it doesn't crash and then. Okay, George, thank you, thank you, appreciate it, good job. Number four, discuss action to approve Paulin County Airport Authority request for concurrence from the Paulin County Board of Commissioners to proceed with accepting a Georgia DOT grant in the $100,000, $100,000 managed pay from general airport operating fund to design and construct a wildlife fence around the perimeter of the airport, Terry Tibbetts Airport Convention.
Thank you, this one will take just a few minutes to provide the background and information that is controversial topic, so I want to make sure the public has all the information necessary to make the right decision on this issue. I'm going to start out by reading what is called a cert alert. This is publication by the Airport Safety and Operations Division of the FAA and I'll just read a few excerpts from this memo. Says elevated deer population in the United States represents an increasingly serious threat to both commercial and general aviation aircraft. Proper fencing is the best way to keep deer off aircraft movement areas. And it says if deer are observed on or near the aircraft movement area, immediate action must be taken to remove them. So that counts as direction from the FAA. All airports in the United States are inspected biannually. Our last inspection was March of this year and the inspector noted in the inspection report that deer tracks were found in the vicinity of the runway and we were instructed to contact Steve Smith, State Director of USDA Wildlife Services for mitigation methods. That's a euphemism we're calling them to get, what we have had in the past is a permit to kill and this requires basically the removal of the animals on the property for safety considerations. As you probably are aware, aircraft are made of aluminum, fiberglass and other lightweight materials and they do not have crumple zones, they don't have airbags and before 1976, they don't even have shoulder harnesses. So a collision at near 100 miles an hour as an aircraft is touching down or taking off with a 200-pound whitetail bug is far more serious than a collision even in an automobile. So it's something that the FAA takes very seriously and they've brought it to our attention. In July of this year, we received a letter from Ms. Colmer who's the intermodal director of the Georgia Department of Transportation and her department oversees airports, ports, railroads and other intermodal transportation in Georgia, but it includes airports. And she was notifying Chairman Austin that we had been approved for funding. Every airport in Georgia, every airport, public airport in the nation receives grant funding in the amount of $150,000 per year for various projects that are approved by the FAA, but they gave us an additional $300,000 this year for wildlife mitigation. And so this is above and beyond our $150,000. And so this letter was notifying Chairman Austin that that was the case. Unfortunately, Chairman Austin had to send the following letter, dated 14 September of this year and included in that says, unfortunately, at this time, Paulin County is not in a position to proceed with a wildlife fence project for which state funding was approved. We respectfully request that the $300,000 in state funding be deferred until FY18 to allow our airport time to complete our environmental assessment and develop environmental, or excuse me, and develop engineering plans for this project. What this is all about is, it's no secret that the airport has been involved in a very long reevaluation environmental study that was court mandated in 2014 and it has taken far longer than environmental studies normally take and there's no definite end in sight to when that might be approved. So about two weeks ago, I was contacted by both the FAA and the Georgia DOT that said due to the long delay in the environmental process, they have determined to exercise their authority to issue what is known as category exemption to an environmental assessment, which basically says that safety issues are overriding environmental issues and they intend to press forward. This was them contacting us, not us contacting them. So at our meeting last week, the Paulin County Airport Authority agreed to proceed with this project and to accept the $300,000 grant funding from the Georgia DOT. And in full disclosure and in order to make sure we're all on the same page, I felt it was necessary to bring this to your attention and to make sure that we concur. The next thing I'll bring to your attention is a research project conducted jointly by the University of Georgia and Martha Berry, or Berry College, Martha Berry, Georgia. And I won't read the whole 163 pages to you, but I'll quote just one sentence from the abstract where they note that daily deer movements in response to fencing can be reduced by up to 95%, 98%, excuse me, by an appropriately designed fence. This report was based on, studies based on rail, excuse me, highways and as you know, highways are not 100% covered by fencing because you have intersections on ramps, exit ramps and the airport would have a fence around the entire property. So it's like fencing in a pasture, except in this case, the intent is to keep the animals out, not to keep the animals in. So in terms of accepting this grant, I bring your attention to our intergovernmental agreement between the airport authority and your board and paragraph five, sub-paragraph E says, in addition to contract payments, the county shall remain the sponsor for current and future airport improvement program grants administered by Federal Aviation Administration and further agrees to take no action that is inconsistent with receiving or negatively affects such grants or any other federal or state grants to which the county or authority are eligible to receive in conjunction with the airport. So that would be the authority upon which we would come to you and ask for concurrence to proceed. Now for the controversial part, as you know, we are in the middle of this court battle to determine Part 139 approval at the airport. So some people would hear our desire to put a wildlife fence up on the property and they might interpret that as a backdoor way to get around not being able to put up a TSA security fence, which would allow us to proceed and make progress towards our 139 application process. So I draw your attention to two advisory circulars published by the FAA. The first is Advisory Circular 150-5360-13 and this advisory circular is titled Planning and Design Guidelines for Airport Terminal Facilities. And in paragraph 131 in chapter eight, sub-paragraph D, they define security fencing and they say it is recommended that fencing be a minimum of number 10 gauge galvanized steel chain length fence and it goes on to describe in detail what they consider a security fence to be. And so a security fence to them is an eight-foot security fence, chain link fence with hogwire at the top like you would typically see around a large airport or a prison or, you know, a facility that's being protected from personnel entrance. So that is their definition of security fence. And then I'll draw your attention to the advisory circular 150/5370-10G and in section 164-1 dot one, this item covers the requirements for furnishing materials and constructing new wire wildlife exclusion fences. So these are the definitions that are provided for wildlife fences, which is what we're talking about here. They have two sub-paragraphs here, paragraph A and paragraph B. Paragraph B basically redefines the security fence that you saw in the security circular and what that says is a personnel security fence can double as a wildlife security fence. But paragraph A of this section allows for a woven wire fence of number 12 and a half gauge and goes on to define some of the specifics of that wire. This is the type fence that you typically see when you drive down the interstate, except those fences are four feet high. The fence we're talking about here is eight feet high with hogwire at the top. And that is consistent with the Berry College and University of Georgia research where they have determined that this type of fencing is very effective for the whitetail deer which we find in our area. So while the fence could be built to be, to meet both requirements of fiscal security and animal deterrence, we are proposing that we build a wildlife only fence in accordance with paragraph A, which does not in any way further the cause of Part 139 certification. And this is primarily driven by the financial size of the grant that's been given, the $400,000 total amount, 300,000 state funding, 100,000 from our airport general operating budget. We have a quote from 2014 when a similar fencing project was being proposed for the airport and while these prices are no longer valid because the quote's too old, the relative amounts are significant and we had both security fencing and Georgia DOT fencing quoted in the same quote. And at that time, the price of the security fence was $35 a foot and the price of the GOT fence was $16 a foot, so roughly twice the price. So for the amount of money that we have received and for the purpose, stated purpose that we have of wildlife exclusion, we believe that this DOD, Georgia Department of Transportation Wildlife Exclusion Fence meets the demands of the FAA, meets the requirements that we have today and avoids the controversy of mixing that with our Part 139 certification discussion. So in summary, I'd like to say that this project is mandated by the FAA, funded by the Georgia Department of Transportation, approved by the Paulin County Airport Authority, recommended by the Paulin County Airport Director. It is backed by research from UGA and Berry College. The matching funds will come from the airport's general operating budget and do not require additional funds from Paulin County government. This request is consistent with the requirements of the intergovernmental agreement. The project is urgently needed for safety and has nothing to do with Part 139 application and will not satisfy the Part 139 personnel security fencing requirements. And I ask that you approve this motion so that we can proceed post haste with this project and I'll be glad to take any questions.
The hardest part of this was it, we used a quote from UGA?
That was very hard for me to do. I wanted to leave that out and just give credit to Berry, but I had to give credit for credit to Steve.
He's a tape manager, you guys, you didn't get it. Any questions over there, Airport Director?
Terry and I have had several conversations. Mr. Tibbetts, the estimates that y'all got several years ago, you and I looked at and $16 a foot and $35 a foot, so basically we would be pushing a million dollars for a TSA security fence.
Based on those estimates?
Based on those estimates from back then, we would be pushing that. And back then, the estimates they were looking at doing some TSA security fence and then the rest of it.
That is correct.
Wildlife fence. You may have seen some of the security fence out there and then the other places would have been the wildlife fence.
Yes, let me clarify that. So we currently have fencing around the terminal area. The fencing runs, if you're familiar with the airport property, the fencing roughly runs from the terminal to the left to the last row of hangers to the right. There are two automobile gates, electronically controlled automobile gates that keep the public off of the aircraft movement areas. This project would tie into that existing fencing, would not do anything to that existing fencing, but would tie in from both of the current endpoints of that fence and extend around the exterior perimeter road. We have gravel surface road that runs around the entire property and it would basically run the shoulder of that road all the way around the property and close off the remainder of the property to protect it from animal movements.
So your fence, I know we've had 5K and 10K runs and those things out there, so your fence would be on the outside of the road?
Of that road, yes. So it would not in any way interfere with the 5K runs and we've got one coming up. So they have to be let into the property anyway in order to participate in that run and they would be running the perimeter road, which would now be fenced in as part of the wildlife deterrence.
And that wildlife fence that you described that we talked about is wooden post?
It is wooden post, it is woven wire, so it's very similar to what the old, us old farmers in the county used to call hogwire, except that the spacing on it is uniform instead of being small at the bottom and going up, you should get higher. And it is much lighter gauge than chain link fencing.
So there's, because I've had some phone calls, you know how that goes and I want the public to be aware, so there's nothing with the wildlife fence that would have anything to do with TSA security and there's no way that that fence could be modified in any way for TSA security. We would have to basically, if there was ever a need, which we don't see that, but if there was ever a need for a TSA security fence, it would be another fence installed.
It would be another fence installed.
That million dollars would still be there to, I mean, it would, or whatever.
It would be a new project and would have to be funded by a new grant or refunding from some unidentified source at this time, yeah.
Because of you getting it now, you don't have the estimates yet.
That is correct. We're just going off of the old estimates from 2014 and we'll have to get new estimates based on new engineering drawings that have yet to be drawn up.
And that's to take how long, do you think?
60 days.
And then the project would take how long?
Well, the bid process will be approximately 30 days and the construction process would be maybe another 60 to 90 days.
I don't think I have any more questions, but I'm going to look just in case. I would like, Terry and I sat down on Friday for an hour and a half. We've sat down on other occasions and discussed a lot of things going out there and I appreciate you, appreciate your work you're doing. your work you're doing, I appreciate what you're doing to make our general aviation airport successful, I appreciate the conversations, there's been a lot to make, and how you dug in and researched and found what you need to find, and how you've been able to bring the information to us, your willingness to sit down, your willingness to sit down and have town hall meetings, which I think was very successful, and I, I appreciate, and I look forward to working with you, okay, in the future, in the direction that I see the airport going, I feel good about that part. I don't think I have any other questions at this time, there might be some other questions that come up throughout the day, and I know I can call you.
I'll be around. Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's the Commotion for Raker Business and our Executive Session, no citizen wishing to speak, do a hear motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, any discussion?
All say aye.
Aye. What we would rather do, since it's 11:12, why don't we call it 11:45, is another good time, for us to be pirate printing through the dedication of the forelining to Bill Ruth Buckland. So 11:45, thank you all.